And we are live. You're all set gentlemen and ladies.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, June 24th, 2020. It is now 6:33 PM. We're gonna do a determination of a quorum. Mr. Mattson?
I hear.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Rayes?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny?
Here.
Secretary Lukowicz?
Here.
Vice Chair Kalunian?
Here.
Chairman Flynn is here. And Mr. Ozinkowski and Mr. Porcelli are accused for tonight, uh, excuse for tonight's meeting. Hold on a second. Before we start, Mr. Wazika?
Yes, sir.
Could you do me a favor? Could you bring Sarah in from as attendee into the meeting? She's over under the attendee column.
I will promote to panelist. She's coming in as a panelist.
Sarah, can you hear us? You're muted.
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so you're not gonna have any, or we're not gonna be able to see you tonight?
No, you can if she puts her video on.
Okay. There we go. There we go. All right.
Is there anyone else, Russ, that you would like in?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
All set.
Mr. Chair, the floor is yours. Okay, can we please stand for pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance. United States of America. And to the republic which makes sense. One nation, united in God. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you Carl for the flag.
No problem.
Okay, number four, we have approval of minutes. So, uh, just Russ, I just wanna clear one thing up. 4.1 and 4.2, um, I actually am recused from two, uh, from, from a thing on both of those minutes, so I'm gonna recuse myself from, uh, or abstain on voting on 4.1 and 4.2. Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for a minute? Somebody's got something else going on in the background. I know, I can hear it. Could you guys mute yourself or whoever's doing that? I'm looking to make sure all the, um... Yeah, all, everybody's muted on the, um, I don't know who it is, but...
Not here.
I think it's, it's gone now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Russ, you want me to step away from them first two? No, I thought you were gonna move a couple of them around. Bring the last two forward. No, no, I'm talking about the minutes. Am I abstaining from the vote? You have to abstain for the minutes, the, the site walk with the two. Okay. Only that one, correct? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do 4.1, May 27th, 2020, meeting. Approval of minutes. Can I get a motion for an approval?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Uh, could you just say your name?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and a second?
Sandy Lukowicz, second.
Second from Sandy. Any discussion? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna poll, uh, I'm gonna poll everybody. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Approved.
And Chairman Flynn says aye. Okay, on the 4.2, June 3rd, site walk, I will be abstaining from that vote? Why don't you, why don't you jump down and do the 8th? And then, yeah. All right, we'll go to June 8th, site walk. I have a motion for, for the approval of the site walk. Motion to approve, James Kenny, motion to approve. Okay, do I hear a second?
Glenn Anderson, second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, I'll poll. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye on that. Okay, the June 3rd site walk. You wanna take over on that one, Rick?
Yeah, we, uh, the June 8th site walk was the printer plant on Coventown Road, and then that was immediately followed by the...
The solar.
Site walk at the solar farm further up Coventown Road. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Glenn, go ahead, Glenn.
Glenn here.
I second.
Do I have a second?
I second. Sandy Lukowicz.
Second by Sandy Lukowicz. Okay, I'll poll the members. Uh, I gotta find the screen. Glenn Anderson?
Aye.
Carl Mattson?
Aye.
Sandy Lukowicz?
Aye.
Kevin Rayes?
Aye.
James Kenny?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Mr. Flynn, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, I'll just make an announcement on 5.1 on the Oaks. That is gonna be continued to the July 22nd meeting. So before I do the recommendations, uh, 6.1, I'm gonna move some things around if it's okay with the board. I'm gonna take the two, the last two, which are 8.1 and 8.2, under new business and discussion in action, and I'm gonna do those now if it's, if it's okay with the members of the board.
That's fine.
Aye.
Okay, 8.1 is a master plan approval extension request for the Rhodes, Rhodes, the Woods at Red Brook, Phase 3 Pine Hollow Estates LLC. Applicant is requesting a one-year extension of master plan approval of a 36-unit multifamily planned unit development project, PUD, within a 24-foot pave right of way. Now AP 24 lot 125, Zone R20. Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Cafrey, representing, uh, Offshore Development LLC. Um, Offshore Development is now the present owner of this property, having acquired it uh, in October of 2019 from, uh, JBFM Properties and Pine Hollow LLC. Uh, principal is still Mr. Catelli, it's just a, a change in the ownership component. On behalf of the applicant, uh, we are requesting a one-year extension for the preliminary plan approval, uh, master plan approval, excuse me. Um, basically due to the fact that we're having a difficult time getting our approvals due to the, uh, the COVID delays that we're running into. Uh, we have applications pending at the moment with Kent County Water Authority, and also with, uh, DEM for wetlands determination. So it's just been, uh, it's been a real struggle. So we're looking to try and get another year uh, so that we can get all of our approvals in place.
That's understandable. Any discussion on that for the board, any board members? Before I ask for a motion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for an extension? Motion to extend, uh, James Kenny?
Second by Kevin Rayes.
There is a second by Mr. Rayes. Any discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll poll the board. There's some discussion right there. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes? Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn says aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you too.
Okay, next is 8.2. This is actually a final plan approval extension request for Big River Estates, Padula Buildings Incorporated. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin for the applicant. Uh, this is a request for a one-year extension on final approval that this board granted last year. The reason for the request is some miscommunication between the developer and the engineering department of the town of Coventry with regard to inspections of the public improvements as they were completed. There have been arrangements made now to, uh, to make those inspections and, uh, continue with the public improvements, and I expect to be uh, back before this board in short order to, uh, reduce the bond after those improvements are uh, approved by the town engineer. But, uh, in the meantime, we'd ask for a one-year extension, uh, to complete that and to, uh, record the final plan.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, any, uh, I'll take a motion for 8.2 on the extension. Hearing any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sandy Lukowicz, second.
Okay, second by Sandy. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, let, just from my, uh, learning experience, did I hear you say the, the, asking for the last extension? Uh...
No.
No?
One-year extension.
One-year extension. And just for, uh, my experience, how, how often can, like, they apply for this extension? Several times, or is there a limit? Just curious.
What, what's that? Russ, they can keep requesting, right? They can. As long as the board, if the board wants to see fit to grant it, that's fine. Um, I, I, to be honest, I don't think this will, I think this will be the last one, uh, for this developer.
Yeah. Come on, understand it, that's all.
Okay. I don't, I don't remember ever, uh, rejecting an extension, cuz they're, you're normally done in a timely manner anyway. Right.
Yeah, I thought I heard the word final, uh...
No, no, no. Let me explain. The way, the way this was advertised?
Yeah.
It was misadvertised. It was a Scrivener error. It was advertised as a preliminary plan extension request.
Okay.
It's actually the final plan approval extension request. They have final approval. They have not recorded the milos yet. With, so they want to extend final approval. That's, that's why he said final.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll poll the board. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn says aye.
I thank the board.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, we're gonna go to a recommendation. This is a recommendation to zoning for the board review. It's a recommendation for a special use permit for Eagles Locks. Owner Ian M. and Ledd C. Heath. Applicant Eagle Locks to operate a locksmith business in an R20 zoning district, AP 15 lot 34, Zone R20, and it's on 410 Arnold Road. Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Christian Tracy, representing Mr. Heath in his, uh, in his application for a special use permit to operate, uh, the, a locksmithing, uh, operation, uh, which is, which is running out of a 10-foot by 12-foot shed situated one foot to the right of the existing garage and six feet to the right from the Wesley property line. Uh, Mr. Heath is also seeking a dimensional variance for the, uh, shed as well. It, it, it is an existing structure. Um, Mr. Heath is here today, and I just wanted him to take a moment sort of to describe the, the business operation uh, that he's, uh, that he plans to continue to operate at the, at the property. So go ahead, Mr. Heath.
Yes, good evening. I, I'm running this locksmith operation. I'm a mobile saw, mobile locksmith. And I run it out of a conventional van. And I, I got to a point where my van was always stocked. I could never find anything.
Back in?
Say again? No, it is on the phone. Oh, yeah. All right?
Um, are you next? Um, no. No, no. Hey, Russ, mute yourself.
Mute yourself, Russ.
I am.
Okay.
What's up?
Go ahead, Mr. Heath.
Go ahead, Mr. Heath.
I run, I run the mobile locksmith business out of my van as I go through the site. Re-keeping policies, uh, retail locks, and I've been doing this as an institutional locksmith for Kent, New England. For, I'm in my 19th year there. So, I run this part town. I'm a full-time locksmith for Kent, New England, employed there. And I did it also years ago when I worked at Webber Chevrolet when we were on Tyler Gallow. And my problem was what I had to carry, cuz I work in rough hours, like evenings, holidays, Sundays, Saturdays. I can't just go pick up parts and repair the person's lock and get them out of whatever situation they're in. So I had to stock a lot of stuff, a lot of equipment. And this is what I need the shed for, so I can mainly stock my equipment, so when I need it on a weekend, I'd have access to it. And when I get big lock jobs, like Master King jobs, where I have to cut keys for 300 locks, I very well can't cut keys, that many keys in my house due to I have a six-year-old and my wife, so it's, I figure out, I'll build a shed and put it outside and keep it totally separate from the household.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. So, uh, there's a picture of the, uh, shed provided in Mr. Heath's application. Uh, it's been existing since 2019. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a good-looking shed. He tried to keep it within the character of the neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, it, there's not, uh, you know, cash transactions going on inside the shed or anything like that either, so uh, that is why he's just seeking a special use permit to really have more of a storage slash minor workshop in the shed. Uh, that's detailed in the application.
Okay, um, I have a question. Uh, the property, is there any problem with the property owner on the north side of your house?
Move it off. The north side? No. There's, uh, the lock road on the north side.
There's a house, uh, adjacent to your, to your locksmith shed. There's no problems with that neighborhood?
Ken and I, we've had worries because he keeps telling people what he wants to do with my fences that I have on my property. So I don't get along with him. Every time I've had somebody come over, like, when I had my driveway put the crushed asphalt down, he's interfering with people I had do that. He just doesn't say, like I tell him, stay on your side of the fence. I stay on mine. And that's the issue we have. He's in, he's in everybody's business, and I'm, I'm the one who speaks up.
I just wanted to ask that question. Um, I know, uh, Arnold Road is what I call spot zoning. There is a lot of commercial use on Arnold Road, but, you know, you will have a public hearing with zoning. We're just gonna make a recommendation, uh, for or against the project. Uh, anybody else on the board have any questions? Yeah, I do. On a given day, how many folks would you have coming to your shed? Like a, a customer, or is it strictly storage?
Strictly storage and for me to work, to work there. Now, I'm not saying somebody hasn't stopped at my house and come up and fight to cut keys. But there's sometimes, I go three, four weeks and I don't have any, you know, I don't see anybody that comes and stops there. It's, cuz I don't advertise other than basically Facebook or Word of Love and what, and what the lettering is on my van. So, cuz I had signs out front to try to advertise, but I'm not looking for retail sales area. It's just to advertise Eagle Locks in Coventry. And when I got asked by the planning board to remove the signs, I did. It was just a, a real estate sign in my front yard.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heath. Anybody else on the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kalunian.
Okay, go ahead, Kalunian.
Can I just ask, why isn't there another suitable location for a shed on the property that would serve the same purpose?
I'm in the same, same situation. The other side of my house is the same thing.
No, in the backyard, for example. That meets the set for a shed.
Backyard is a, is a hill. And there is a shed in the back corner, what we purchased the house with. And that's in a play area where my daughter uses that as a playhouse. You won't look in there. There's not any, but the little girl's toys.
And you're saying that shed was either placed or built in 2019?
Oh, that one in the back was built...
No, I'm talking about the one you're seeking a variance on.
Yes, yes, the one in 2019.
So, would you have it delivered, or did you?
Say again?
You just had it delivered?
Oh, I built it.
You built it there, 2019?
Never again.
Is that it, Rick?
Um... Yeah, I, 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 I'm just gonna be ca, I, I'll let everyone else speak, but I, I, I just wanna tell you, it's, it just seems, the sideline setback seems a little tight. Um, and I did look at the abutting property. I took, you know, I mean, that's a strictly residential property immediately to the south, and then after that, we've got, I think, a chiropractor that painted practically his whole front yard. So it is spot zoning. But the property immediately to the right has got a, you know, bought the house and has it completely landscaped in the front yard. Um, I, I, I mean, if someone wants to run a business out of their garage or their house, I, the biggest issue for me, quite candidly, is the sideline setback.
Mr. Chair?
Can I comment? Go ahead. Uh, we'll take Mr. Anderson first.
Thank you, Mr....
Do you wanna comment on Mr. Kalunian? I do. Okay, Mr. Heath, go ahead. No, it's Russell. Oh, Russell, I'm sorry. That's okay. First thing, um, I wanted, uh, if, if the town manager could make me a host, so I can bring in, I wanted to share my screen, but I was unable to do that. So if he could do that, I'd appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Kalunian, you kept referring to the dimensional variance. And I understand that's important, but unfortunately, that you, the board is not tasked here this evening with discussing the dimensional variance. You're only tasked with an advisory opinion on the special use permit.
You have it, Russ.
Thank you, sir. So, um, do you get that? You, you know where I'm...
Yes, in other words, the recommendation to the zoning board is strictly based on whether or not we think the business should be permitted on that street. It has nothing to do with the dimensional variance.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And it'll have a public hearing at zoning anyway, so... Yes, they will. And then zoning can bring up the, uh, the side setbacks too if they want. Well, no, they will, because in addition to a special use permit, they are asking for a dimensional, a side yard dimensional variance. Okay. Mr. Anderson, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Heath, Anderson, uh, where are you, where are you cutting the keys now?
My van and in the shed.
In the shed that you just built?
Right.
And that's the only, you have a cut, you never cut them in the garage of the house anyway. You just pretty much use the, uh, use the shed.
Right.
And, uh, you know, my only thing is, and like, just on a given day, like, what are you cutting? A dozen keys sometimes, or two dozen more?
Not even.
Say again?
Finally, I work, I work till 3:30, 3 o'clock from Kent, for Kent, New England. And when I get home, I, there's weeks I don't have anything during the week to do.
Right, right. And I'm just worried about, like, uh, the, just the decibels of that machine. I don't know, you know, how loud it is. You know, anything over 85 decibels becomes a, you know, pretty much an annoyance of, you know, beer, OSHA.
I agree.
I don't know. I didn't know if the shed was, you know, insulated or soundproofed, or, you know, or ventilated for that matter. You know, with the dust and everything else that might come with it. I, you know, I, I just don't know the process.
Yes, it's all insulated. It's, I built it to residential, like, residential structure. It's all, has all the joints hanging, it is, and, you know what I mean?
And you... Yep, and the key cutter, is that like, what I see, like, at the, uh, the Home Depot? Is it that large, or is it just a table?
It's not that big. It's just the cutter machine itself is on a workbench.
Okay. And you've been cutting keys, you would figure, on and off for the past, uh, year or so in that shed?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, Sandy Lukowicz, uh, you get a permit to add that shed onto the house?
Oh, I did not.
You didn't?
I added it to the house. It's not attached to the house.
They'll be talking about that, so, Ms. Lukowicz, they'll be talking about that at zoning.
All right. I mean, I do know, uh, I used to have my keys made at the lock shop next to Main Street, uh, Liquors. And I don't remember there being any noise to having keys made, or dust, or anything else. That's my opinion.
Anybody else for the applicant?
Yeah, uh, Ron, um, this is Carl.
Go ahead, Carl.
Uh, what I, what I was wondering about is, we had mentioned, we touched on some signage. Um, is there a sign on, on there? Um, do we expect any type of exterior lighting, which, uh, you know, right now it probably wouldn't make much of a difference in summertime, but in wintertime, uh, do we expect anything like that?
No, the only thing I had, I had lighting on was like for, for Christmas, I lit up the front of the shed, but that wasn't... I had signage in the front yard. You can see the, uh, real estate sign that I had made up, and I had it sitting in the front near my flagpole. I took them down when I got the, the letter from the planning board, and it's not, they're not even out there now. So all there is is just a shed.
So is it your intention to put the signs back up?
Say, say again?
Is it your intention to put the signs back up if you get the zoning approval, or would you stipulate no signage?
No, I don't need the signs.
You all set, Rick?
Yes, I am.
Okay, anybody else from the board?
I'd like to say, ask one thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Rayes.
I wanna make sure I heard it correctly. When he put that shed up, he didn't get a, uh, permit?
Uh, he did not.
He did not? Okay, that's all I needed to know.
But we're not voting on it if you got a permit, though. We're just...
I, I understand that, but I'm not gonna put my name on something that didn't get approval from the town, so...
I agree.
Okay, uh, anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody like to entertain a motion? I don't hear any motions. Are we gonna, um... Approve, uh, we're gonna send it with no motion? Or we gonna, do I ask to, for a motion of denial?
Mr. Chairman, my, my, my understanding, just correct me, and I'm only saying this for, you know, again, just to reiterate, um, cuz we haven't had these zoning recommendations in a while. We do not have to make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, and regardless of what type of recommendation the planning board makes...
Right.
Zoning board can do whatever it chooses, uh, notwithstanding that. Is that correct?
Correct. So if I don't hear a motion, um, I guess we will send it with, with no recommendation. If I may, Mr. Chair? Yes. The zoning board would prefer a recommendation, um, but, you know, we have sent things over in the past without them. Um, but, you know, um... Well, without a motion, I can't make...
I, I, I'll make a motion to deny it. Because he didn't have, he didn't have a permit, so I, I can't accept it. I, I make a motion to deny it.
All right, I have a motion for an unfavorable recommendation to zoning. Do I hear a second?
Glenn Anderson, second.
Okay. I'll, I'll poll the board.
Discussion, Mr.?
Uh, I can ask for discussion again, yes. Any... Uh, I can ask for discussion again, yes, any discussion?
I, I just wanna, for the record, say, it is kind of unfortunate, because it's, it definitely is spot zoning. I mean, you have automotive almost immediately across the street, you got tree cutting. I think the situation here is the close proximity, and I know we're not supposed to consider that, but, um, I'm not sure how this business actually fits in with the immediate, abutter to the immediate right, and that, and that's really my concern. I understand the zoning board is the, the board that deals with the dimensional variances and the setbacks. And, and it's kind of unfortunate, there's not another spot on this property that might be, uh, or, or that the surroundings for this property, I should say, aren't more suitable for that, that type of business. It almost borders on, um, light industrial use, if he's not actually doing retail sales. It certainly isn't, it, it isn't office, so, um.
Well, if I can make a, if I can make a comment, um, we're here to, uh, make a recommendation to zoning for a special use permit. So my opinion on this is, it is spot zoning on that street. I, if, if the applicant wasn't honest, I wouldn't know if he got a permit for that shed. I'm really not voting if he got a permit. I'm just voting if I feel that, um, a commercial use property on Arnold Road would fit in the, with the adjacent, um, structures. And there is spot zoning on Arnold Road. Um, there's accountants, there's heating and air conditioning unit places. So in my opinion, I will give a favor- favorable recommendation, because they're only asking for a special use permit, and that's really not our purview, to determine whether it, it, uh, has the side setbacks, or if he got a permit for that shed.
That's what my comment was gonna be, Mr. Chairman. We're not, eh, we can't, I don't think giving a non-favorable recommendation based on the fact that he didn't get a permit to build the shed, because we're not, we're, that's, that zoning's issue, that's, we're just looking at whether we think it would fit in along Arnold Road, that type of business per se, or, um, yeah, that type of business to be conducted on Arnold Road in that particular area. Mr. Chair, if I may, just for a minute?
Sure, jump right in.
You, you know, a motion was made.
Yes.
You just said you will be, you would support a motion to approve. There is no such motion on the board right now.
Correct. I just wanted to make a statement.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes.
There's only one motion at a time.
Okay, so I'll poll the board on the motion to.
Say something.
The applicant.
Yes.
I have a motion.
I mean, I made a motion not to approve it because of that.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I'd rather have that taken care of first before we even, even vote on it, but you guys wanted a motion. I'm gonna deny it because of that situation, but no one else wanted to put a motion on the floor to approve it or deny it. I'm just giving you my.
Okay.
I mean, he was honest, he was honest about it, but I'd rather have that be taken care of through one of the channels, he has to take care of that, then come back to the board. Then I'll be in favor of it, if he gets that problem fixed, because he put it up illegally.
I, I agree.
I'm just saying that, I, I, I have nothing wrong with that business being on that road, but that structure got there the wrong way. If he resolves that issue, my, my voice says a different thing after that. That's what I'm trying to say to him. He gets that resolved, come back to the board, I will approve it. But because it was, he put illegally, pays fines, whatever he has to do on that structure, it's, that's, I just can't do, I mean, that's why I put a, a, a bad favor on that. That's what I just wanna say.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You did have a second, sir.
Okay, by Ms. Lukowicz, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Oh, Anderson.
All right, I'll poll, I'll poll the board on the, uh, to, to not approve the special use permit for zoning. Mr. Mattson?
Uh, I, I'll go along with the deny.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Approve the deny.
You're gonna approve the deny? Okay, Mr. Raze? Your deny, Mr. Raze?
Yes, deny.
Mr. Kenny?
Nay.
Okay, Ms. Lukowicz?
I, uh, I go with, uh, the denial.
Okay, Mr. Clooney?
Nay.
Nay on what?
Nay, I, nay, nay, I, I don't wanna make an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Okay, and I also vote nay.
Ron, and I, I want Sarah to chime in here, I am confused. The motion was to deny, you voted nay. To me, that's an approval.
Right.
No, I, I.
Sarah, do you agree?
The motion to deny, if you say nay, that means you would rather give a favorable recommendation.
Exactly, correct, correct.
That's exactly right. I voted nay, cuz I do not wanna deny it.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure of, that's fine.
We have, we have three nays. We have Mr. Kenny, Mr. Clooney, and myself. So it did not pass.
No, it did not pass, because you need five in favor of or opposed.
Not on a zoning recommendation, simple majority.
Right.
So it did pass, then?
Passed, four to three.
I'll defer to counsel on that one.
I, I think you might be right. I can't hear.
Can't hear you, Russ.
Um, I'm gonna just check with Attorney Goram, um, who is here in the office with me, as to how many, um, people need it to, um, vote aye. So if you could just give me one second, I'll check.
Sure, thank you.
Recommendation, there's a difference.
Rick, I think you're right, I think we just need a, a majority.
I believe he's right, a super majority usually on the minor or major land developments, I, I thought, and everything else is just simple.
But I'm not an attorney.
Mr. Chair, my confusion is, is how we can have a, a recommendation on something that isn't really before us. Our recommendation is either a special use permit, but it's being based on something that we have no purview over, which is a lack of a building permit. That, that's where my confusion is.
Mine too.
If I could comment, the, I believe, and I think Ron tried to make this point, that we either make a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board to issue a special use permit, taking into consideration things like the town comprehensive plan, the neighborhood, whether or not the business is gonna fit in, um, with, with, with the surroundings. That's, that's what the recommendation was supposed to be for. It's unfortunate here it intertwined. I think, you know, again, had the applicant come to us first and said, I'm looking to get a special use permit, got the recommendation one way or the other, then went to the zoning board, tried to obtain the special use permit, and, and the necessary dimensional variances, it would have been a lot cleaner. We're all looking at a picture, which shows, he put a sh- a shed one foot from his neighbor's property line, well landscaped residential property, and, and there, there aren't really any other businesses immediately adjacent to this, and we're kind of basing it on that. And, and that's why I voted against the recommendation.
Same here.
I just wanted to say that Mr. Heath is seeking a dimensional variance in the zoning board. His application does also seek the dimensional variance to rectify the issues that have been presented. So he, he is trying to correct the issue of the, uh, uh, of the setback, uh, along with seeking, he, he, I mean, he is trying to do it like, kill two birds with one stone, instead of doing one at the same, that's one dimensional variance first, and then the special use permit.
I agree. I agree, but unfortunately, the picture's there, and that's.
And, and, well, it is, it's six feet from the property line and not one feet. That's one thing I also wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, two, six feet from the property line, that's right. We're, we're twenties required.
Well, we had the vote, so we're waiting on Sarah.
Uh, we're trying to look it up. So, I'll give you the answer in just a few minutes.
Is David on the phone?
David's not here tonight.
Yeah, David's not here. I have Attorney Goram here, though.
But Russ, but Russ, either or, it did fail anyway, because you had four to not approve, and three to.
No, the motion was approved if the four is acceptable. That's what we're dis- that's what we're discussing right now. Mr. Raze made a motion, you had four people vote in favor of his motion. That's why we're trying to decide if the motion carries.
To deny, right.
Ed, can I ask you to do me a favor? Can you go over to attendees and bring Robert D. Murray in?
I'll stand here.
All right, I have Attorney Goram here.
Is the use you're voting on, is it a permitted use, or is it, uh, for, it's for a special use permit, correct?
It's a special use permit.
So it's a majority vote? Was there, was it, what was the, um, what was the tally on the vote?
It's on four to three.
Four to three. Uh, it's, it's a recommendation. It's, it's only, um, advisory anyway. So, the, uh, zoning board, you report the vote to the zoning board, and they deal with it what they think is appropriate. It's merely advisory under the enabling statute of the zoning.
Thank you, Nick.
All righty, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Sarah, we have a denial.
Yes.
All righty, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we continue?
Yep.
Mr. Wazika?
Yes, sir.
Could you please bring Robert D. Murray in as a participant?
Actually, I made you a host, and you can do that yourself.
And how do I do that, sir?
Go to attendees.
Yes.
Slide down to Mr. Murray.
Yup.
Click on him.
Okay, it says, allow to talk on more.
Go to the other one, go to the, go to more.
Promote to panelist.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, can I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 6.2 recommendation, again, to zoning for special use permit, on an addition with an attached in-law. Owner applicant Michael P. DiLannato, proposed construction of an attached garage in an in-law apartment addition, AP 321 Lot 42.1 Zone RR5 Rural Residential, 275 Waterman Hill Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Mike, that would be you, so unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Hi, Mike.
How are you?
Russ, could you go back in on click on me and make me host again?
Yeah, uh, good luck. How am I gonna do that? Make host, got it. Do you wanna change the host to Wazika? Yes. Did that work?
It will.
You're the host now, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Ron, it's all up to you.
Okay, Mr. DiLannato, you're here representing yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you just explain to the board what you wanna do there, please?
Uh, I'm trying to build in a, a two-car garage addition with an in-law apartment above it for my handicapped mother-in-law.
For handicapped mother-in-law?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any questions from anybody on the board?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Clooney.
Uh, Mr. DiLannato, if you, um, have you, uh, made an investigation as far as the, uh, on, existing cesspool onsite wastewater treatment system, and whether, whether or not you're gonna need any additional permits?
Uh, yes, we have looked into it.
And what's, what's the story?
Uh, so right now, it is, our septic is permitted for a three-bedroom house, so we will have to add, um, a single-bedroom tank to it.
So you're, so in other words, you're gonna have to modify the existing system to accommodate the fourth bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, and the, the photos and the drawings that you submitted, that's pretty much the architect's rendering of what the, uh, finished product's gonna look like?
Correct.
And I noticed that the in-law apartment is on the second, second floor, and you indicated, did you say it was your mother or your mother-in-law is disabled?
My mother-in-law.
And she, what's the disability?
She had a stroke, so she can walk with a cane, and, but it's very difficult for her to walk with a cane, but she had a stroke.
You're gonna be able to maneuver stairs to the second floor?
Yes.
You're gonna put one of those electric seats that go up and down?
We'll leave that up to him.
It, it was a thought, yes.
I mean, how is she gonna get up and down?
Uh, she walks with a cane.
Okay.
And you understand, if she vacates the premises, you cannot rent that out to a third party, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry, bear with me, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure we've covered all the other criteria for a, uh, for an in-law apartment, as far as the ingress and egress. Unless the, uh, the planning director has already covered that. The, is the ingress and egress meet the standards for, for the building department, as far as getting in and out, this?
As, as far as you know?
Uh, yes, we had talked to, who was it we talked to? Carrie, I believe it was, at the zoning, and she said that, that was gonna, that was, oh, code.
Yes, cuz Mr. Clooney, and if I may, what I believe they're gonna have, they're gonna have an exterior staircase, but there'll also be a connection inside, is that correct, sir?
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Right, so that would be the two means of ingress and egress? Okay.
Are you all set, Rick?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, anybody, anybody else from the board like to have any questions on this? Okay, hearing none? Uh, I'll entertain a, entertain a motion, entertain a motion, a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yup.
Big echo going on?
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a favorable recommendation for a special use permit, uh, applicant Michael P. DiLannato, uh, Platte 321 Lot 42.1, one in the RR5s. Uh, the property, uh, will not alter or affect the functionality, uh, of the existing driveway. There is sufficient off-street parking available on the property, utilities are pre-existing, and the abundant properties in surrounding neighborhood is primary, uh, single-family, uh, residence, but has general compatibility to the area. Uh, the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, granting this special use permit, it should not affect the health and safety or welfare of the neighborhood, and I'd like to incorporate the planning director's report in my motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sandy Lukowicz, I second.
Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead, Rick.
Could I suggest, uh, perhaps, that the, or with the, with the, uh, with Mr. Anderson and Ms. Lukowicz, consider amending that motion to include that the applicant has to obtain the necessary approvals that, uh, from the, uh, Redon Department of Environmental Management for an acceptable onsite wastewater treatment system, and comply with all, uh, local and building zoning regulations?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, I will amend my motion to be as such as Mr. Clooney stated.
Okay, motion's amended, second?
Uh, I second the amendment.
Okay, you'll amend your second? Okay, I'll poll the board. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn says aye. So we have a favorable recommendation to, for your special use permit to zoning.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, under old business, we have a pre-application for a major land development, Calvin Town Road. Owners Calvin Town Realty LLC in Rockford Realty. Owners Calvin Town Realty LLC and Rockford Realty LLC. Applicant Rebity Energy LLC. Proposed 5.3 megawatt ground-mounted solar installation. AP 85 lots 1 and 5.3 in AP 92 lot 1. It's zone RR Rural Residential and it's on Calvin Town Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Murray, I'm the attorney for the owners and applicant.
Hi, Mr. Murray.
I'm having trouble with the audio on my laptop, so I'm calling in by phone. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo from Rebity Energy also.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we had a site visit on June 3rd with the planning board. We thanked the members who were able to attend. I thought we had a good explanation and opportunity to talk about the proposed project. And we're happy to follow up with any questions from that visit. Our intention is to proceed forward to master plan at this point. But the planning director put us on the agenda tonight under old business for follow-up on the pre-application. So we'd be happy to answer any further questions from the board if there are any at this point.
Anybody from the board who'd like to have any questions on this project?
Mr. Chair, Anderson. Thank you, has anything changed from our conversation or our site walk in accordance to like the drawings that I'm looking at now that we originally saw? Or is everything?
Well, I think that we, I think that at the master plan level, we will provide a more detailed landscaping and buffer plan. Obviously, it won't be the same level as preliminary, but we've been able to take the information we gathered at the site walk, understand any concerns or issues relating to abutting properties. And we want to present at the master plan stage a good screening plan that will, I think, hopefully satisfy the board and any area of butters. But other than that, the information shared, the size of the solar array is the same. And the general layout that we portrayed to the board that evening on June 3rd will be consistent with the master plan.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I have a quick comment. I know I was very concerned about the buffer, as I believe that all the board is for the neighboring properties. I also made a call to that district council person. And he has had no negative input from any of the neighbors against this solar project. I just wanted to state that. I know it's on its infancy, it's just starting to ramp up, but I just wanted to put that out there for the board.
The only other information I wanted to share with the board, the chairman, as we said on June 3rd, it is our hope to organize and host some type of neighborhood meeting prior to considering this at the master plan level. Where between the social distancing limitations, the site itself, parking and things like that, we have an option which I think we'll proceed forward on. We may have a Zoom component to it, but my intention, or Mr. Palumbo's intention, is to try and host a meeting with the area residents prior to us appearing before the board for master plan.
Yes, that would be great. I know under the site, when we had the site walk, we could only have 15 people. I believe that's been made larger group now, I believe, I think 15, is it more now?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna try and balance the recommendations of the Health Department, the governor. If we have to stagger the neighborhood meeting, you know, and kinda, you know, because with the 1,000-foot radius is a substantial notice component. And obviously, if everybody showed up all at once, we'd have gridlock on Calvin Town Road. So we're trying to work those logistics out now, but we'll abide by the regulations and we'll do the best we can. And, but we want, we'll give people various opportunities to learn about the project either through Zoom that we'll host or an actual meeting with people in attendance.
And one other comment, too, I believe if you do do that and you move those barricades, I think you have enough onsite parking that you wouldn't interfere with the traffic on Calvin Town Road, because it's very tight over there. So might be something you might want to take into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was actually out there earlier this morning. I have a couple of thoughts that I haven't yet shared with my client, but we'll conduct it in a manner that's safe for the residents and the neighborhood traffic, and we won't impact Calvin Town Road. So I think we have some options, but we're gonna flesh that over the next 24 to 48 hours and then we'll have a plan in place.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add too, and again, it's just a suggestion. I think the immediate concern is gonna come from that first row of butters and that the woman that came out the night we were there. It might be almost worth a separate one and then a larger group, I'll let the rest of them come to the board. Again, it's just a suggestion, if you want to get, because I think that's where the biggest objections are gonna come from. The immediate adjacent owners on that strip. Might save you a lot of aggravation if they don't all band together and you'll have an army, but I'll leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, we have some experience with outreach and we'll try and direct the butter right there, I know who you're referring to. We will contact separately, but we're also, I've been speaking to some people on Watercrest Court and things like that. So we, you know, we'll, if, you know, we'll give people plenty of opportunity to know about the project, listen to their concerns. And we'll try and come to you with a unified position and everybody, understanding what everybody's thoughts are.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I commend you for doing that, because, you know, we are concerned about the neighbors' feedback, because they do have to live there. So I appreciate you doing that and, you know, putting that forum together for the neighbors. Anybody else? I'm gonna poll the board, because I guess you're looking for your warm fuzzy feeling to go to master plan, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, before I poll the board, is there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
No problem, proceed.
Chairman Flynn says ayes too, so I think you'll be proceeding to master plan.
We thank you for your interest, your consideration, and the bottom line is, good lines of communication make these projects succeed. And if we fail at that, then, you know, you're inviting trouble. So we want to have a good line of communication with the board, the town, and the neighbors. So we thank you for your time tonight.
I agree, and I thank you also. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to 7.2. Pre-application for a major land development, residence at Boyd Brook. It's a comprehensive permit application. The owner is Green Light Farm LLC. Same applicant. Proposed 96-unit residential development with a minimum of 25% low-to-moderate income housing. AP 330 lots 30 and 81, it's zone RR3 Rural Residential. Anybody here representing the applicant?
John Heidlerini for the applicant.
Hi, Mr. Paolo Grini.
Good evening. On June 8th, we had, the planning board came out for a site visit and we were put on for a follow-up. Presumably, it is our intention that we're ready to proceed to master plan and happy to answer any questions the board may have based on the site visit.
I have one question. You said you applied. You applied. Did you get approval for your application?
You're talking about the letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing?
Yes.
It has been submitted, they asked for revisions, we made the revisions, they've had it approximately 10 days. They have 30 days to render an answer.
Okay. Anybody else from the board have any questions on this?
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, it was brought up at the site walk of the possibility, just ask the owner of the 55 and older. I don't know if you had that discussion with them going that direction?
I did, I did ask the question and was told that there was no interest in doing that.
Okay, thanks.
And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I had a conflict that night, I couldn't make the site walk and I've already had site walks on that site in the past, as we know for the gun range, so I was familiar with the site. But my concern is, and I'm just, 96 units seems kind of excessive. And it looked like they were all one-bath units.
Correct.
I'm just looking for a little bit of the detail, because I don't think that was in, I don't know if that was, if there was actual, was there a presentation at the last meeting, maybe I missed, as far as the number of bedrooms square footed to each unit, how many? How many?
It was, but I can fill you in, the proposal is for 92-bedroom units. Each of the units is approximately 900 to 950 square feet of living area. All on one level, so there's no possibility of going up. And then there'll be six units that are handicap accessible, one-bedroom units, approximately 900 square feet each.
And what's the plan for onsite wastewater treatment?
The experts have been retained and are designing that. We have retained the services of the well company and the engineers have already done their pre-calculations and say we can meet the demands of water and sewer on-site.
Okay, it just seems, my recollection was the first project we approved over there, and I realize it was extreme, probably costly, it was what, 16 dwellings?
16 four-bedrooms, correct, 13 acres each.
Then we were looking for a different type of project altogether when we went with the gun range. And now we're at 96 units in a rural zone. And we're talking about building a 900-square-foot house. Not that there's not a demand for that-sized dwelling, but I just have concerns with it being compatible with the typical homes that are being built in that area that are probably in the 1,500 to 2,000-square-foot range with a minimum of two bathrooms and three bedrooms. And what impact this project is gonna have on surrounding values, especially when you talk about that kind of density. I mean, if you were to split that up to even half the housing with additional bedrooms and bathrooms, that would indicate to me that the water and sewer could still be addressed and that, you know, I can't speak to the profitability, but I'm concerned about the volume of traffic as well as the density. And again, you can proceed, I'm just giving you my honest opinion going forward into master plan.
Sure, and I mean, I could rebut each of your concerns, but this, you know, isn't necessarily the forum for that.
That's correct.
We see that there is a market, a very large pent-up demand for this product. They're not attached units, they're all freestanding 900-square-foot condominium units.
Oh, I agree.
And...
If you told me you were building those in the R20 zone on one parcel and they were gonna be 10 feet apart from each other with public water and sewer, you could build 150 and I would welcome it. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Sure.
That's not the neighborhood that we're going into out there. And again, we're just here to give you the warm and fuzzy feeling, so I'm just giving you my honest opinion, so we don't get to the next approval, it's just...
Do understand that the 50 acres directly to our south is a licensed gravel operation, so... And all the other houses on the other side of us, there's a few of butters, but the majority of the houses are 1,500 feet away on mile road. So I don't, you know, we'll address your concerns.
Okay.
I have one other concern, it's basically a question. We've done a few of these. I thought the requirements ask for recreation, transportation, and shopping nearby. I don't know if that's changed by the state, but I know that's brought up on several of our low-to-moderate income housing developments. And I don't think there's any of that there, not one of them.
That is part of the application to let those be addressed, and they may not be available. But, you know, it also becomes an issue of can a town not do affordable housing just because they don't have public transportation? So we'll take a look at everything. The town has an ordinance, the town has an affordable housing plan that was approved in 2004. Currently, the town's under 6% affordable housing. And they failed to meet the 10% threshold, therefore, comprehensive permit is a viable option at this point.
Right, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I just didn't know if it qualified because of, it doesn't meet any of the criteria for recreation, transportation, or shopping. That was just my opinion on that, I just, we've done a lot of these, and that's always brought up on every one. So this is a pre-application, so anybody else from the board would like to comment on this? I'm hearing none. So staff, are we just, are we gonna just send this to?
You don't need to do anything.
You just want the warm fuzzy feeling, right?
Quite honestly, the plans are going to master plan.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that anybody else on the board had any other questions.
And have any answer anything.
I just wanted to let you know, and it's good to know what our concerns are upfront.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, hopefully, those can be addressed and answered for our master plan.
Yep.
Okay, I don't hear anybody else. I think we're good on this.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that's gonna bring us to 7.3, and I will be recusing myself from that project. And I will see everybody, I believe, our next meeting is July 22nd. Okay, Rick, if you want to take over?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take care, Ron.
All right. Be safe.
Okay, 7.3, the next item, pre-application for a minus subdivision, the Printup Platte. The owner is Ronald P. and Lisa M. Flynn. They are also the applicant. It's a two-lot minus subdivision in the assesses plat 60 lot, on assesses plat 60 lot 64 in the R20 residential zone. Property is located at 21 Calvin Town Road. We had a site walk back, I know it was early June, I'm sorry, the date slips my mind.
June 3rd.
The members were there. And is there anyone here for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Clooney and Mark Boy from Boyer Associates on behalf of the applicants.
Hi, Mark, how are you?
Good. On June 3rd, we did have the site walk, I'll try to keep this brief, I know you've had a long night. I can either go over everything once again, or I can simply say that there were some questions that night mostly regarding to the location, proposed location of the house and or driveway, which I don't think had been finalized yet, we're waiting to get to this point. Both lots will satisfy all the zoning requirements with one exception, that the proposed lot 2 will need an administrative variance from the town for 90 feet of frontage, which is allowed as long as they have 80% of the required frontage by zoning. Again, the new lot will be serviced by... Uh, again, uh, the new lot will be serviced by city water and by a private OWTS. Uh, and, and other than that, I think it, I, I think it conforms to every other, uh, zoning issue.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, uh, about this? And I don't know, uh, if anyone's not familiar with the plan, we could probably bring that up, but if not, um, does anyone have any questions, concerns, needs to the plan?
Uh, Mr. Uh, question, just on the, on the, uh, again, I'm just trying to learn the, the verbiage, uh, just in the statement up top. Uh, it, when it, when it gives the description, you know, in blue, uh, it just says the applicant proposed to subdivide the one point three-three acre parcel into two parcels. The minor subdivision will not require dimensional variances. So like, that's the description, but then, you know, you come down here and, and it says it will require.
No, Mi, Mi, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah.
No variances will be the setbacks from the dwellings to the sidelines, the front and rear. The only, um, the only administrative variance, which means he does not have to go to the zoning board, is in the R twenty zone, a hundred and twenty feet of frontage is required. But there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for an administrative variance to be granted, um, by the, uh, administratively, in other words, they don't have to go before the zoning board.
Right.
If they, if they meet eighty percent of the frontage, so he's gonna have ninety feet of frontage um, on that second lot, and the existing dwelling is gonna sit on a lot with, with more than ample frontage. If they tried to even out the frontage in this case, next thing you know, uh, they'd have to move that property line over. Then he would need dimensional variances on the existing dwelling. He'd be into the driveway, if you recall, uh, what was shown on the plan. So, um, that's why no variances are, are required, other than the administrator variance for the frontage.
Okay. And again, when I read the, uh, the proposed lot will, uh, have approximately ninety feet in front of Calvin Town Road and required a dimensional variance for frontage, you know? I kinda saw the same thing twice. Maybe I should've said run administration variance for frontage, you know?
That's fine. I know it's confusing.
Yeah.
I honestly wasn't aware of it myself. We had a similar one over, reminding what a few years back.
Yeah.
Mark, you alluded to some questions that came up at the site walk. Was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I, I think that the, um, again, the placement of the house hasn't been, well, the, the, floor plan for the house and the site location for the house haven't been determined yet. The test holes that were dug to the rear of the property were, were not that great, so we did dig test holes about even where, with where the shed is, and I think those were the best test holes. So the house will probably be pulled a little bit more towards the road than what we first anticipated, but we'd still like to keep the proposed house somewhat behind the existing house, just for privacy factors.
Privacy from the road?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, does any, anyone else on the board have any questions? Does anyone have any objections? I'm not gonna poll each member, but if somebody doesn't feel comfortable with this for any reason, um, or if they have a concern about the plan is drawn, maybe they could just let Mark know. If not, I'm gonna just assume for the time being, uh, without polling the members, that nobody has any objections to this proceeding for the next step. Is there, Russ, the next step for this is? Russell, I'm sorry, next step?
Sorry, the next step is, um, what they have to do now is, they, they, because this is a minor, they will go straight to preliminary. Prior to going to preliminary, though, they're gonna request the administrative, um, variance. Let me just explain to you guys briefly about the administrative variance. The administrative officer has the authority to grant a variance up to seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent of one-twenty is ninety. So I have now, in, in my capacity as the administrative officer, I have the right to grant it, just because I grant it. Let me explain what happens. All his abutters around his property get notified. If I get one, one letter back from any of these abutters, and they, they tell me they have a problem with this application, they're opposed to it, it doesn't happen. It now has to go before the zoning board. Okay, so that's the way this whole process is gonna work. After that is all done, then he needs, he needs that variance, whether it's administrative or zoning board, prior to going to preliminary. So he'll then come back for a preliminary application, uh, which is where all his engineering will be done and all his permits are done. As you know, a minor doesn't have a master plan. It strictly has a preliminary. I hope that answers all your questions, Mr. Colonian.
It does. Thank you for the explanation, and, and I can also assume that at that preliminary plan stage, we will at that point know, uh, where the onsite wastewater treatment system will likely be placed, where the driveway will be, and where the house will be placed in more detail than what's shown on the current plan, which.
Abs, absolutely, because that whole site will have been engineered by that point in time, and they will have already submitted their permits to DEM for their OWTS.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else have any questions about the process of this application? Does anyone have any concerns with their proceeding to the, uh, administrative variance and then on to preliminary approval? Hearing none, I think we're all set, Mark.
Great, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Love you.
Thank you.
Right.
Right, that was the last item we had on the agenda. I know Mr. Flynn indicated he would not be rejoining us, so if, uh, there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Carl Mattson, motion to adjourn. Second was Sandy Lukowicz. I'll poll the members. Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Lukowicz?
Aye.
The Rays?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Everybody have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Wazika, Mr. Crossman, for hosting another.
Thanks.
All have a good night.